Here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four year old and a one year old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching the fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10 minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
I'm Terry McAtier, acting as chairman today since our chairman is not here. So we have three of us present. And with that, I'd like you to join us in the pledge, and I'll have our newest commissioner lead us, please. John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Garst has run out to her car for a minute. So at this point, would you, let's do a couple things here for a minute. We do have a new commissioner on board, and it's nice to have you here, John. John, just for the sake of many of the people on staff and others, give us a little insight on us to you, if you don't mind.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having me here. My name is John Foley. I'm a local farmer and rancher here in District 4. I was appointed by Sue Hook. And I've worked over the years with the county on policy priorities for local nonprofits here in the county, and I look forward to this new role and continue my work here.
Great. Thank you, John, very much. And with that, would a clerk call the roll for the board, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Garst?
Here.
Commissioner Foley?
Here.
Vice Chair McAtier?
Here.
Chair Millman?
Okay. So we're, and we do not have a commissioner yet from South County, so we're hoping that occurs soon. In the meantime, it's now time for public comment, so members of the public are allowed to address the planning commission on items not appearing on today's agenda that are of interest to the public and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission, provided that no action shall be taken unless otherwise authorized by subdivision 6 of section 54, 954.2 of the government code. And so if you'd like to come up, you're more than welcome to, and we'll take any public comment on items that are not on today's agenda. Seeing no one, we'll move on to commission business, and we'll turn to the, our chair, our planning director for some thoughts. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For, sorry, I was looking at the.
You're up on planning, Commissioner Training.
Sorry. I'll introduce our county council, Trevor Koski and Sims Ely. That will be giving a Brown Act kind of overview of the role of the planning commissioner.
Okay. Hi, Trevor.
Hello, commissioners. Before we dive in, I just wanted to take a moment and thank the commissioners for their service. It's challenging work. It takes a lot of time, but it truly does influence and help how the county grows and The county council's office greatly appreciates the thoughtfulness and commitment and the public spirit. Also, a special thanks to the new commissioner. Welcome aboard. My name's Trevor Koski. I'm the assistant county council. This is Sims Ely, and he is the county council attorney assigned to the planning commission. We are going to give you a very quick overview of some of the things you'll need to know. You run across a refresher for some, an introduction for others. I'm going to cover the Brown Act, and I'm going to try to do that very, very quickly at a very high level. I would just note that, and you'll hear this in other places, county council is always available to answer questions you may have as they come up, whether it's about your role as a planning commissioner, the work of a planning commission, the processes generally. We're always available to answer legal questions, work through conflicts, things like that. Staff is always available to answer questions on specific projects as well. You should never hesitate to reach out. The Brown Act, what is it? It's California's open meeting law. It's existed since 1953, and it essentially makes sure that all decisions made by government bodies are done in public. It enshrines a legal right to the public to know what's being discussed by government bodies, know how decisions are made, and to actually participate in the process. The planning commission is a Brown Act body. It's because you exercise decision making or advisory authority on land use and planning decisions. That means that the Brown Act applies to all your meetings, your communications, and the way you conduct business as a planning commissioner. The requirements of the Brown Act at a sort of very high level, and there's many exceptions to it, but at a high level, it's just a few things. One, all your meetings have to be noticed. For a regular meeting, that means 72 hours before the public's told what the, that the meeting is, what's going to happen. There has to be an agenda. It has to be posted publicly, and it has to clearly describe all the topics of business that are going to be discussed or decided upon at the meeting. So if it's not on the agenda, with a few exceptions, you shouldn't be discussing it, and with, there isn't an exception where you should definitely not be making any decisions on anything that's not in the agenda. Third, the public has a right to attend the meeting, be there, and comment on it. You heard public comment earlier. For a general meeting, that means public comment on anything within your jurisdiction and comment on each individual item that will come before the commission. Crucially, what that all means is that the majority of the commission, which means three of you, can't discuss or deliberate planning commission business outside of a noticed public meeting. There are a few exceptions to this. One is sort of administrative matters. The example would be, there's three feet of snow out there. Is anyone going to be able to make it to the meeting? Does anyone need a ride? Those types of administrative things are not within the subject matter of the commission, and you can't discuss them with each other. Other things, community events, conferences that are open to the public, you know, dinners, right? All that is fine, as long as what's being discussed isn't planning commission business. You're also allowed to talk to staff or attorneys individually, one on one, right? The Brown Act applies so that the three of you can't know what the others are thinking, but a conversation with staff, you know, ask questions, get answers, as long as those questions aren't, what does Commissioner A. and Commissioner B. think about this? The questions are all fine. It's you three meeting, not you meeting individually with staff. A few things to look out for, common pitfalls, we'll call them, serial meetings. Commissioner A. talks to Commissioner B., that's fine. You can talk to one other commissioner. It's not a majority. But then Commissioner B. goes and talks to Commissioner C. about the same topic, then you have three people discussing commission business, even though none of them were in the room together talking, you know, the chain connects three people. That can be a problem. Another common problem is just replying all when you mean to reply to one. You get an email about some topic, some commission topic, from staff or from an attorney, and then you reply all with your comments. That is a meeting. You're telling, you're telling the other commissioners, or at least three, what you're thinking about commission business. Also, just a word of warning about group texts, private messages, social media, things like that. If it's commission business and you're talking about it on there, you just have to be very careful because other commissioners might be, you know, you might have a social media post with a bunch of comments, and you don't see all the comments, but maybe one commissioner says something here, another commissioner gives it a thumbs up, and another commissioner says something way down. Again, you have more than a, more than a quorum discussing commission business. That's a problem. Very quickly, the consequences for violating the Brown Act. There are three. I think the most common one is corrective action, right? You do something, you're notified that this may have violated the Brown Act, there might be a lawsuit. You might have to come back your next meeting and redo the thing that you did. Doesn't seem like that big a deal. It isn't necessarily, but that's the, I think, the most common corrective action for a Brown Act violation. The next one is a lawsuit to nullify what action the commission took. The court finds that it violated the Brown Act. It will nullify the action, and it will almost certainly issue attorney's fees, which can be expensive. The third one that everyone should be aware of, but is exceedingly uncommon, is intentional knowledgeable violations of the Brown Act can be charged as a misdemeanor. Again, not a common one. I'm not even aware of it happening ever, in my experience, but it is something that's possible for, for knowing willful violations of the Brown Act. And I will say, I'm going to turn it over to Sims to go through the refresher, but if you have any questions, I'm going to stay for the presentation. We're available for questions after.
Thank you, Trevor. As Trevor mentioned, my name is Sims Ely. I'm a deputy county council here in the Office of County Council, and I'm the attorney assigned to represent the planning commission and the planning department. And I'm just going to briefly go over sort of what are the planning commissioner basics? What is the planning commission? What is your role? And how should you effectuate that role? As you likely are aware, each of you was appointed by your respective district supervisor. So there's five commissioners. As Trevor mentioned, three is a quorum. So what you do, your jurisdiction as a commission is, the authority is granted pursuant to our ordinance, specifically 2.14.042, and you are in charge of making a recommendation to the board, hearing, reviewing, and making a recommendation to the board of supervisors regarding any general plan amendments, any amendment to any Nevada County zoning ordinances, and then approval of any subdivisions or disapproval of any subdivisions, requiring a final map and parcel maps creating more than four lots. Also, to consider and make recommendations regarding major use permits and site plans as provided in the respective zoning ordinances. You'll see that happening a lot. You'll get a lot of conditional use permits that come through here, and it's your duty to review those and then make a recommendation. The statutes do require that you make a recommendation. Previous planning commissioners have asked, what are we required to make a recommendation? And if you don't have a recommendation, then that essentially becomes your recommendation to the board, that you have no positive or negative recommendation, and it will move on to the board for consideration. Basically, what your board does, and why it's important to go through this, is Trevor spoke to the Brown Act in public meetings. But what is, why do we have public meetings? It's for due process. And what's due process? It's essentially being fair and transparent so that the public, the government, any stakeholders have the opportunity to hear, be heard, argue their points, and that the public can effectively hear that and be apprised of it. Oh yeah, I got some slides. Here we go. We got a guy slapping his head. We don't know what he's slapping his head for. Perhaps he's, doesn't understand what due process is. He's confused, or he thinks it's so obvious that he's saying duh, that it's really obvious. Either way, essentially, you're in a quasi judicial role, and so when you hear these items that come before you, it's your job to make determinations, make findings and recommendations to the board of supervisors. Due process is essentially the ability for the public to, to hear what's going on and to be heard. If you need any information, staff is great. Trevor mentioned that. They're very knowledgeable in the laws, the rules, the regulations, and they can provide materials to you, background materials, if you need it. And you can contact staff prior to a hearing. You can talk to them, and it's advised that you do so. If you have any questions, generally, you can contact staff before the hearing. They can provide you with info. And then you can formulate some questions ahead of time that you might want to ask staff. Again, not talking to each other in more than a quorum, but you're welcome to formulate any questions on a project before any hearings. If you want to get advice of your council, I'm here for you. Our office is here for you. I do advise, if you want to get legal advice, that you do so outside of a public hearing. You do so before the hearing or maybe after the hearing. If you ask for advice during the hearing, we'll do our best to provide it, but you waive any confidentiality privilege you might otherwise have if that advice is given in a public setting. Let's see here. We'll stick with this. If you have any conflicts of interest in your deliberations, or you think you might have a conflict, bring that to staff ahead of time, bring it to our office ahead of time. Certain conflicts can't be waived. If it's a conflict with a capital C, meaning a financial interest in something, that needs to be disclosed, and you might likely have to recuse yourself from any deliberations. If it's another kind of conflict where you think you might not be able to be fair and unbiased, then you should bring it to staff's attention, and you should disclose any potential bias before you make any decisions. The idea behind due process is to have an unbiased decision maker, and you are the decision maker in these. So if you can't be unbiased, then you should at least disclose it, potentially recuse. If you, there's two parts to bias. There's real bias, that you actually do, you know, have a predetermined opinion on something. Then there's the, sort of the appearance of bias. So, you know, you want to make sure for the public and for everyone else in transparency that you do have a fair, open mind, and you're not making, emoting, you know, negatively, positively towards anything that's before you, but to keep an open and unbiased mind. So that's part of due process. Second part of due process is not having ex parte communications. That means communications outside of the public hearing, which means that you shouldn't be having communications about a particular project with stakeholders, applicants, people that are in the community, different advocacy groups. Not to say that that's completely banned, but it's not good practice. And if you do have any of those kind of communications that might bias you, certainly disclose that during the public hearing, that you've had those communications, but they are frowned upon. You should try to keep all communications regarding a project to the public hearing. All of your decisions must be made based on evidence that is presented at the hearing, and that's why this is part of the due process importance. So that if you do have ex parte communications ahead of the hearing, or if you receive information that's not presented at the hearing, and you use any of that information to base your decision on, that can be very bad, and you don't want to do it. This will come up sometimes with site visits. Sometimes commissioners will want to visit a site, and it's not prohibited, but it can cause certain problems with ex parte communications and due process. And so if you do have a site visit, you want to disclose that, I would recommend talking to staff before making any site visits or making any direct contact with any applicants. When you're doing your decision making process, it's really important to create good findings because you're going to be making a recommendation to the board, and they'll be recommending, they'll be adopting or making decisions based on the findings that you make in your hearings. So the slide is a good example. You've got option one here, which says, you know, proposed zoning district is consistent with applicable land use designation. Doesn't tell you very much. So option two is much better. It gives distinct reasons because the proposed zoning district, RA 6, allows the same density, et cetera. So you want to be as specific as possible when you do make findings. And those findings are often found in your staff reports. Recommended findings will be given by staff oftentimes. So if you're wondering about what exact finding to make in a motion, you can refer to that staff report. Oftentimes, it's laid out pretty well. You are also a quasi judicial body, and you are able to modify any findings that are recommended, make any additional findings that you might want to. You just have to make sure that you do it on the record and be clear about what your findings are. Trying to rush through this, had a big day today. Much of what you do is based on the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. It's important to know that this is not determinative. It's just intended that someone's well informed of the environmental impacts of the decisions they make. So you want to, you'll get recommended EIRs, or you'll have EIRs before you. It's not important that it lays out exactly the best possible outcome, or that the best and only way to do something is from a perfect environmental analysis. There can be disagreement among experts, and just because experts disagree on something doesn't make the EIR inadequate. The idea is that it's adequate and that it's complete, and there's been a good faith effort at a full disclosure and not for perfection. So when you make your SEQA determinations and you review your EIRs, keep that in mind. It's a good faith attempt to capture all of the environmental impacts. I know that was quick, but if you have any questions now, you can take them. If you have additional questions later on, too, like I said, I'm always available to answer one-on-one questions about procedure, law, anything like that.
Questions from the commissioners, anything? Okay, thank you both, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you.
Uh huh. On the consent agenda is only one item, the commission minutes of the ninth, the, God, is it that long? How long's it been since? It's been a long time since we've seen one another.
That's right.
January 9th. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have one small correction.
Sure.
On line 311, one of my statements was addressing TPZ setbacks, and it says 100-foot burning structure versus 30-foot, and it should be building.
Thank you for that correction.
And I watched the video, and it did sound like I said burning. But also, the, just an IT comment, the, there was some very strange, like, closed captions on the last meeting's video, so maybe just have IT look into that. I'm not sure what was going on there.
It's speaking a different language?
Oh, it was just, it was very repetitive, and it wasn't matching the words. So just a comment for IT.
Okay. With that amendment, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Great. Motion, and second, let's just do an all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Great. Move things along here, catch up here. We have a public hearing currently now. Item one on our agenda is regarding a property, immediate rezone from TPZ Timberland Production Zoning to New Zoning RA 10 for 157 acres and Ag 30 for 150 acres, approved through ordinance 25, 2453 in 2018, and a proposed tentative final map to subdivide two legal parcels with six APN numbers totaling approximately 307 acres into 11 lots ranging from 4 acres to 127 acres. And Mr. Barrington, this is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. It's actually David Nicholas, associate planner, who's working on this particular project.
Oh, that's right. I do know that. I talked to him. David, I see you're both up there. It's a tag team with blue shirts on. Very impressive. We have, we have team colors. Okay, David, over to you.
All right.
We can smile at this, you know, it's okay.
All right, thank you, commissioners. My name is David Nicholas. I'm an associate planner for Nevada County. As Commissioner McAtier said, the project presented before you today is an immediate rezone and tentative final map for John Pay. So just to provide a little bit of background, the board of supervisors previously approved a rezone, to rezone this from timber production zone with a minimum parcel size of 40 acres into RA 10 and Ag 30 pursuant
into RA10 and Ag 30 pursuant to the county code. That typically takes a 10-year rollout process, which would be ending in about three years from now in 2028. What this project is proposing is an immediate rezone out of the timber production zone. So three years early to rezone the northern portion of this on an immediate basis to RA10 and the southern portion to Ag 30. In addition to the immediate rezone, the project also proposes a tentative parcel map to divide two legal parcels into 11 lots ranging in size from four acres to 127.4 acres. All 11 proposed lots would be served by individual septic systems and seven of the lots would be served by public water provided by the Nevada Irrigation District while the remaining four would be served by private wells. As we can see on the map on the screen right now, the project parcels are indicated in that crosshatching. They're primarily surrounded by RA10 and also fairly lower den, or higher density to development, which is already predominantly developed with single-family residential homes, while the southern portion of the proposed project area is mostly surrounded by Ag 30 zoning with lower densities on primarily undeveloped parcels. As we can also see, this project is served by county-maintained mileage, Banner Quaker Hill Road bisecting the parcel, and also Red Dog Road. While this project was reviewed, it was evaluated for compliance with all of the site development standards required by the County Land Use Code. Part of that review is ensuring that the density that the zoning allows for an area will not be exceeded. The potential density here would be 20 lots. This project's only proposing 11 lots. Another part of the site development standards is ensuring that the minimum parcel sizes are adhered to. What you see is that there's some four-acre lots, and the reason that works is because the county code allows for density averaging. So while there are some lots smaller than the minimum parcel size, you know, we can see those over south of Red Dog Road on the left side, that those smaller lots are okay because it averages out to a parcel size that's consistent with the zoning district standards. The zoning district also allows for things such as limitations on impervious surface or building heights. This project does not propose any new structures or construction at this time, so building heights and impervious surface standards will not be exceeded. All of these parcels are also developed with building envelopes. The building envelopes are developed to avoid the setbacks required by the zoning district and therefore any future development will not be encroaching upon the setbacks. And finally, in regard to the site development standards, the RA and Ag zoning districts require road frontage. All of these proposed lots have at least 200 feet of road frontage, so they're consistent with that standard as well. I just wanted to provide a little bit more detail about how this density is working on this lot, on the subdivision. What we can see is that lots one and two are actually larger than the minimum parcel size, so they could be developed or subdivided further in the future. This isn't proposed with this project to divide those lots any further at this time, but we want, what we want to do is ensure that a subsequent subdivision can't result in more density than the zoning would allow for. And so what we propose and which is, has been accepted by the applicant's representative is a deed restriction on Lot 3, which would prohibit that from further subdivision, ensuring that this would be consistent with the 20 parcel density even moving forward into the future. One of the benefits of preventing Lot 3 from being further subdivided is that it further encourages or aligns with the general plan policy of clustering because we're clustering all of the development to the north while we have a kind of a large unfragmented habitat that would be on Lot 3 to the south. So now we're moving on to the traffic and access for this. All of these lots would be served by existing county roads, Red Dog Road, Red Dog Crossroad, and Banner Quaker Hill Road. No new access would need to be developed for these lots, but one of the things that the Department of Public Works required is a certification from a private engineer, private accreditation, to ensure that all these roads meet the A2 county road standards. If the roads are inadequate in some way to those road standards, the applicant would be required to improve those roads to meet those standards that Public Works is looking for. It was also evaluated that these roads and these lots are not beyond dead-end road standards. And finally, based off of the trip generation rates expected for these single-family lots, it is estimated that they would generate 104 daily trips, which is below the traffic screening thresholds determined by the Nevada County Transportation Commission. Like most of Nevada County, these parcels are in a very high fire severity area. So there was review from the Department of, let me rephrase that, from the Nevada County Consolidated Fire Marshal in addition to the Nevada County Office of the Fire Marshal. And so this project has been conditioned in a way to mitigate that fire risk to the greatest extent practical and to levels of less than significance pursuant to CEQA. One of the things that they're proposing is that Lot 1 will be developed with a 10,000-gallon water tank. This is meant to serve lots 1, 2, and 11. The reason these lots have to be served by the water tank is because they're greater than 750 feet away from those existing fire hydrants which are on Red Dog Crossroad. The remaining lots would all be served by those fire hydrants. Furthermore, in ways to mitigate for those, those impacts, it's also proposed that a fuel break be installed along the property line of Lot 3. This just borders the southern property line of lots 4, 5, and 6, but is completely on Lot 3 and would be required through deed restriction to be maintained by the property owner of Lot 3. This is intended to, you know, slow down any fire that would be moving up the Clipper Creek Canyon. Additionally, those lots bordering the canyon would also be required to have additional defensible space, also required through deed restrictions. So instead of the typical 100 feet of defensible space, they would be required to maintain 200 feet of defensible space from the structures up there. Like all the projects in the county, this was also evaluated for compliance with our environmental protection that we have in our code. These building envelopes were designed to avoid the different seasonal streams, drainages, and creeks, and therefore no management plan is needed. They also avoid slopes steeper than 30% and any protected landmark oak groves. On the supplemental data sheet, you see that the landmark oak groves are identified, so anything with a canopy greater than 33% or large oak trees, those are all avoided. Biologists also inspected the site to look for protected sensitive status species. No special status species were identified, but based off of the habitat, the biologist said there's a low potential that species could be found in the future. So before any construction can occur, it's proposed that a pre-construction survey be required to ensure that those protected species aren't impacted. So now we're moving on to this immediate rezone slide. So as previously discussed, this rezone was previously approved, but this project is proposing an immediate rezone. Pursuant to county code, to approve an immediate rezone, there has to be some sort of demonstration of public benefit. The applicant proposes to dedicate Lot 7 to the Nevada County Consolidated Fire District as a way to demonstrate public benefit. And one of the things Nevada County Consolidated emphasizes is that they don't have any specific timeframe for when and if they develop a fire station, and they may use that lot for some other purpose deemed feasible or in their benefit. Those may be things such as selling the lot and using it for staff or a fire truck, but regardless, it would still be in the public benefit. In addition to the, in addition to the dedication of the lot to the fire district, the project also proposes a 15-foot wide trail easement along Banner Quaker Hill Road. This isn't the development of a trail. This is just the establishment of an easement. But the benefit of this is that this section is in our Nevada County Non-Motorized Trails Master Plan and is a desired trail corridor that we'd like to develop one day. And it also increases the potential connectivity of the trail networks because to the north, there's an existing trail along the Snow Mountain Ditch, which this could ideally eventually connect to. So this project underwent environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Based off of the initial study, it was determined that a mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate environmental document for this project. Due to the review determining that all potential impacts have been mitigated to levels below the significant thresholds of CEQA, this initial study and MND was circulated for the standard public review period of 30 days, which began on February 15, 2025, and ended on March 17, 2025. We received one standard comment from the Central Valley Water Quality Control Board, which doesn't impact the initial study and is discussed in the staff report. We also received three public comments expressing concerns about traffic impacts, fire, and evacuation, but all these comments have been discussed in this presentation and are also discussed in the staff report, the memo, and the initial study. So therefore, staff recommendations are as follows, that the planning commission make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors after reviewing and considering the proposed mitigated negative declaration for the immediate rezone and tentative final map, to adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration pursuant to sections 15074, 15073.5, and 15074 of the California Environmental Quality Act, making findings A through E of the staff report. And staff's recommended project actions are that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors the approval of the immediate rezone from timber production zone to Ag 30 and RA10, subject to the conditions including in Attachment 1, making findings A through E pursuant to Nevada County Code. And secondly, the staff's recommended project action is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors the approval of the tentative parcel map to allow for the creation of 11 lots, subject to the attachment mitigation measures and conditions of approval, making findings A through I pursuant to the county code. So thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, David, very much. I'll open it up to commissioners, sort of, if you have some clarification comments before we open it up to the general public. Commissioner Garst?
I have one clarification comment, and this is just kind of historical clarification, but the 10-year rollout period, is this, is this consistent for all rezones or was this specific to this project?
Commissioner Foley, that 10-year rollout period is required for any rezone out of timber production zone pursuant to the Nevada County Code.
Understood, thank you.
And David, I have a question. So on Lot, on Lot 3, there's an existing residence. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
And I think that's, the applicant lives there. Is that also true, I think? Yeah?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So that's the only existing, I drove up, that's the only existing structure within all those acreage?
Yes, that's correct. That's the only existing structure out there, and that's what my observation was too, based off of my site.
And so I'm looking at the bottom of the map, which all these maps are now sideways or upside down up there, and there are a whole bunch of other structures down there, not, not in the property that we're talking about, but these are, are those homes right along there? Do you see what I'm talking about?
Commissioner McIntyre, are you referring to the gray structures?
I'm referring to all of these structures down on the, is it the west side? Down by Lot 9 and 10, those are all subdivided parcels there. Is that correct of homes, private homes?
Just to, just to be some clearer, are you looking outside of the subdivision to west?
Yes, I am.
Yes, those are, those are currently subdivided properties and residences that are outside of the scope of the project.
And what, what, generally, what, how big of those, how big are those lots right there?
Those range, let me, so those range in size from 1.5 acres to about 13 acres, all in that RA zoning surrounding the northern part of the subdivision.
And is that, those, those are sort of a long, I'm trying to get exactly where it is, those would be a long banner? How would you gain access to those homes there? Is that a long Red Dog? No.
It appears.
Those are a long Banner Quaker Hill Road, correct? Access to those homes?
So we're, I believe you're, Commissioner McIntyre, I believe you're referring to these, these homes in here, and so those would be accessed through driveways off of Red Dog Road, from the north of Red Dog Road.
Okay.
Or south of Piscali Road.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I think that's it for now. So let's open it up to the public if you don't mind. You're welcome to come on up and chat with us for three minutes or so, and please state your name and your, where you live in the county. Hello? No, I think press a little button there.
Ah, hello?
Yes, we got you.
My name is Morris Hervey. I live off of Red Dog Road, near the top of Banner Mountain. And I do have some concerns about this project. First of all, the traffic. It's my understanding the project would send 104 vehicle trips per day into quiet Deer Creek Park neighborhoods, or also possibly, likely, onto the windy, narrow roads of Banner Lavacap neighborhoods. Excuse me. Or if fully built out, it would send nearly 208 vehicle trips per day into these areas. Deer Creek Park in particular is a quiet 25 mile per hour neighborhood where people often enjoy strolling along Red Dog Road. In my view, this is an unacceptable safety risk to pedestrians, and I speak as someone who has been hit physically by through traffic in Deer Creek Park and sent to the hospital. It's also an impact on the quality of life in Deer Creek Park. Another concern is wildfire. The project dedicates a parcel for a future fire station, but as mentioned previously, there is no commitment by Consolidated Fire to ever build it. I'm sorry, the word that comes to mind is a sham. Also, some historical background. In the early 2000s, an existing fire station on Quaker Hill Cross was closed by the fire district and subsequently sold. Doesn't sound to me like there's a commitment to have a fire station there. Also, the project is located in an area long known to be difficult for a rapid fire evacuation. The project could plausibly generate 22 evacuating vehicles, or when fully built out, it could generate 40 vehicles trying to evacuate. However, this evacuation traffic will be multiplied by recent decisions of the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors to allow ADUs, that is accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units, and tiny homes on wheels on every residential parcel on Banner Mountain. All of this feeds into a combined potential emergency evacuation of Banner Mountain and Cascade Shores and exacerbates that whole situation. Cascade Shores, and exacerbates that whole situation, which everyone in the county, especially those living on Banner Mountain, know is a very extreme problem.
So Morris, your time is up, so do you have a closing statement for us?
Yes. In the public interest, the project requirement, with respect, as a requirement, it is seriously in the red. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Morris. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Red Dog Cross Road. There we go. I'm a volunteer in the community, very active in my firewise community. Evacuation routes and wildfire starts are my concern. My comments are not specific to this particular residential development plan, although it applies. I am aware that the ordinance for this rezoning package was approved back in 2018. My presence here today is to continue to remind the planning commission of its responsibility and future accountability in ensuring the safety of our residents when considering developmental applications. I understand your reviews fit within existing engineering and land use laws, codes, and standards. I challenge you to consider these documents have not been kept up with the new year-round wildfire risk or the aggressive behavior of today's wildfire. I'm challenging the commission to look at all new development requests through the lens of the recent LA County wildfire disaster. LA leaders are on the defensive, attempting to justify how existing governmental policies contributed to the disaster, the loss of lives, and what they could have done differently. Have you seen the videos of the bulldozers moving abandoned cars off the roadways in LA County? How about Lahaina? What about the bodies discovered in abandoned cars at the campfire? These tragedies all demonstrate the outcome of insufficient evacuation routes for a known populace. County leaders are well aware of the extreme vulnerabilities of unincorporated Nevada County. In addition, these new, well-intentioned, as Morris said, supplemental housing per parcel ordinance mean you could have on one parcel a primary dwelling, one family attached to a prime, an attachment to the primary dwelling, a second family, a garage conversion, a third family, and an accessory unit, whether it's brick and mortar or a tiny home on wheels, four family density, additional cars. Planned and proposed developments that utilize the very few Banner Mountain roadways to escape to Highway 49 are severely insufficient for the present population, and yet the planning commission continues to entertain additional development without mitigating our roads. I'm not just talking about the strong efforts by the Office of Emergency Services and the county to address vegetation management. I'm talking about addressing our two-lane roads with no paved easements, sharp curbs, and deep ditches. There's no way for a mass evacuation to occur safely, let alone providing the lane space needed to get emergency crews through quickly. During an emergency evacuation, these roads are literally killers. To better understand how much trouble we're in relative to wildfire risk, the county has at its disposal the fire safe regulations, NC ordinances, the Nevada County Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Nevada County Evacuation Study, and the Nevada County Committee Wildfire Protection Plan. Consultation with your own staff, the OES staff, National County Consolidated, excuse me, Nevada County Consolidated Fire District, Nevada County Sheriff's Office, will confirm additional risk created by adding more population without addressing our narrow and dangerous roads. We look to our planning commission to reduce wildfire risk and not increase it. We look to the planning commission to require appropriate evacuation route readiness as part of the development application process. I challenge you to carefully consider the impact of this in any of the future development applications.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. George Olive, longtime resident up there on Banner. There's a bad mismatch between the level of concern about wildfire and evacuation in rural areas like Banner, and priorities in the planning commission, excuse me, planning department. The word evacuation doesn't even appear in the staff report. It's not in there. Word wildfire does. There's a little section about wildfire. But evacuation of these types of areas has to become a priority for planning staff. How are all the people going to get out of these tangles? There are roads all off the roads mentioned in this plan, and Banner Lavacap Road isn't even mentioned in the plan. It's not tagged on the maps, and that's one of the main routes out of there. So I have to say that there seems to be a shortage of thoroughness in the planning that has gone in around response to emergency. As prior speakers have said, the firehouse isn't going to get built. A helipad? Yeah, right. We need to think about this. It's going to be really a mess if a fire comes up out of the canyons that surround this project. Terry, it sounds like you went up there. Clipper Creek is really steep. Greenhorn Creek is right there, too. Deer Creek is right there, too. There are three canyons that all climb up to this place, and one of the fires is going to come up. Scott's Flat Lake comes up to Banner Quaker Cross. It is really steep to Pasquale Road. That fire is going to roar. So I, there needs to be more thought put into how many people we want to be living there, how many cars we want to be coming and going, and how the hell we're going to get people out of there. If this project goes forward, I hope the county prioritizes improvements to all of the roads, knocking back all of the vegetation, et cetera, et cetera, because it is a really dangerous situation, as, as Mo has mentioned. So friends of Banner Mountain is quite well organized. We have our own firewise community, a lot of thinking and a lot of talking about an evacuation exercise of some sort, multi-agency, be a real pain in the neck, but, but boy, we would really love to see an attempt, that was starting to be planned back before COVID. We'd love to see an attempt at, at an actual evacuation drill. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Hervey.
Let's move the mic down towards you. That's great. And your name again, sorry?
Okay, I am Jaclyn Hervey.
Great, Jaclyn.
Hi, I live up on Banner Mountain. I have been told that when Deer Creek Park was originally developed around 1970, that the expectation of the board of supervisors was that these would all be vacation homes. And so we didn't really have to worry about things like fire evacuation and a lot of people living up on the mountain. These were temporary homes. A few people will be there at a time. But now things have changed, and it's fully occupied by full-time residents. And so in addition to the evacuation problems that would have been then, now the board of supervisors has authorized ADU units, tiny homes on wheels, and although no one currently expects all of those to be built, no one expected Deer Creek Park to be fully built and lived in. So as one makes a decision on evacuation and other things, you have to consider that at some point in time, these could be fully built out. The approval of the ADUs and tiny homes disregarded the safety of current residents. Unless the mountain can be safely evacuated, no new projects should be approved. And this current project requires that it really be in the public interest. And as others have talked about, they've put aside Lot 7 as a, for the fire department, but as we've heard, the fire department might actually just sell the lot. But even if something were to be built as a fire station, that does not help any of the residents evacuate. We will still be in just as much trouble trying to get off the mountain, not wanting to be burned up. When the planning commission and board of supervisors vote to approve a project, they need to take into account all the things that have been approved henceforth, the ADU units, tiny homes. There's a lot of lots up there that have not been developed, but they are zoned so that a person could go in, buy the lot, and build. That is all going to just increase the risk for all the residents there. We don't need this project. It doesn't have any public benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jaclyn. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Jason Robitaille. I'm the Fire Chief, Nevada County Consolidated Fire. I just want to speak to this project, and I hear all the concerns, and we shared some of the same sentiments. When a developer comes here, we look at what is the, the increase or what is the effects to our deployment strategy. This site was selected for multiple reasons. We are not committing to a fire station just because we have not done the proper analysis or deployment strategy, but this could actually have a positive impact in reducing our number of fire stations. Currently, we have one that's dormant in Cascade Shores that houses some unstaffed equipment, and then we have a fire station 86 down on Banner. Having a fire station in the future could eliminate having those two buildings, so there would be some efficiencies there. A landing zone, I think, is very important for us. Just last week, we had a traumatic incident in Cascade Shores, a vehicle versus pedestrian. That patient needs to go to a trauma center, so having those pre-designated landing zones would reduce the time that we need to get a patient to definitive care. Those require trauma centers that are outside of our service area. So having a landing zone, that patient was going to be transported to our fire station in Nevada City, where we constructed a pre-designated landing zone, I believe, last year, and since then, we've already used it 10 times. So this would have a positive impact. Also, during wildfire, since it's going to be close proximity to fire hydrants, when there's fires with, that is not in a hydrant area, it requires a water tender, and that is a large fire engine with 2,000 gallons. So this could be a good staging area for us to fill our water tenders, to do water shuttle operations, quick turnaround so they're not impacting those roads while people are evacuating. Also, if it requires CAL FIRE's hand crews, it could be a staging area for those big crew buses to park, and we could shuttle them into, as well as their dozers, if need be. So those are some of the things that we feel like this, this site would really help that area. And also, I do believe when you do have fire stations staffed in close proximity, we can reduce the growth of the fire before they become a significant threat. So I understand the concerns. It's a beautiful neighborhood. The neighbors are very tight-knit, and we, we hope to maybe one day be good neighbors to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I hope you're going to stick around, Chief, because there might be some members of the commission that'd like to ask you some questions. Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to comment? Hearing none, I'll close off public comment, and I'll turn to you, David. Is the applicant here? Would he like to make a comment to the commission? You know, we're more than welcome to have him join us and, and share his thoughts as to some of the issues raised. David?
Yes, Commissioner McHattier, the applicant is here. If you're able to come up.
Hello. I'd like to thank the commission and the public for the opportunity to present today.
And you are?
My name is Theodore Goodman. I'm a land planner with Millennium Planning and Engineering. We are the applicant's representative. We had a presentation prepared, but in the interest of everyone's time, I think that planning staff has done a very diligent job of covering, covering the project and supported by the fire chief's information as well. It's been very thoroughly covered, so we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any comments from any, anything that the public had to say that you'd like to share some thoughts on?
I would like to recognize the concern that the public has around wildfire safety. Living in rural areas like these, it's on everyone's mind all the time. We feel that this project really does provide considerable public benefits with not just the fire station, but also the development of a fire break. Additionally, when we have this large contiguous property, it's difficult for one property owner to effectively conduct vegetation management across all of the land. Inherently, when it's subdivided and individual homes are put up, as David described very well, there will be additional fuel modification that comes with each resultant parcel that, as it's developed, which I think is the safest passive option we have towards mitigating wildfires.
Okay. Thank you very much. So stick around there. I'm going to open it up to the commission, and beginning with you, Commissioner Garst.
Thank you, Terry. I just wanted to disclose that I own property 2.5 miles approximately from this site, and I don't think that's close enough to have to do anything, but I wanted to disclose that information. So I'm quite familiar with this area. I drive past it every day. I had a couple of questions. First of all, I just wanted to clarify to the public that we are not hearing a rezoning application. We are just considering whether to allow the rezoning to take place three years earlier than it would have otherwise taken effect. So I just wanted to clarify that. I was wondering, in the original rezoning application, why it was determined to rezone these RA 10 and Ag 30 when the parcels are smaller, and then now we're going through the, the density averaging? So I was just wondering if you could address that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Garst. The, from my understanding, when the property was approved for the rezone in 2018, it was to return it to what's compatible with the existing general plan designations, and then through density averaging policy and the encouraged clustering within the development code, that's where we're resulting with lots that are smaller.
Okay, thanks. There was mention in here about the shaded fuel break, and that lots 4, 5, and 6 will be required to maintain that. I'm wondering what provisions are in place to make, require that maintenance? What tools, what tools are being put in place?
Sure, thank you. We coordinated closely with the Nevada County Consolidated Fire District on finding an effective mechanism that would effectuate that, and it would be the responsibility of each individual property owner to maintain that fuel break. But one of the conditions, as I understand it, for this project would be to develop the fuel break prior to the subdivision.
I had, I think that was all I had. Thanks.
Commissioner Foley?
Yeah, thank you. I have a few questions. In regards to Lot 7, I know we've heard that, you know, it could be used for various fire applications. I'm curious, is there an expiring time on the gift to Consolidated Fire? Like, if it's not used within a certain number of years, it could be developed for residential use?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Foley. There is no expiration. It would be an encumbered donation to the fire district, and they would be able to do it. They see fit with it as it aligns with the public's interest.
Okay. I'm just curious if, you know, if these, if these lots were developed in the future, residences all surrounded by, you know, it's essentially kind of land-locking that, that lot. If it wasn't used or maintained or something like that, I'm not saying that it, that it won't be. I'm just curious, in the future, you know, things change, and, you know, if there's, if that's been taken into consideration at all. I also have, I do have a question about the timber production rights for the potential development of the new properties. Since the property is, properties are being rezoned from Timber Production, Timber Production Zone into Ag and Res Ag, for a future development, if a property owner needs to come in and clear their land to build a house or for fire protection, are they still allowed to commercially harvest lumber and sell it now that those, the zoning has changed? And that might be for the planning department.
Yes, Commissioner Foley. So the Timber Production Zone is primarily just like a tax benefit that people go into. Being able to harvest timber isn't exclusive only to TPZ zones. So while there's these oak trees that are protected, and to remove timber in the future, they'd have to get the appropriate permits from CAL FIRE, the owners of these future lots could still remove timber, clear timber, harvest timber, in alignment with the state laws for that.
Great. And then regarding that tax reclassification, when, when would that go into effect? When would those properties be reassessed to Res Ag and the Ag property tax rates?
So prior to map recordation, we'd be looking for a certificate from the Nevada County Tax Collector's Office that the landowner has met their tax obligations.
I think that's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Foss, I have a question, because it came up from some of the comments here. So why aren't, with the, the number one issue in this community happens to be evacuation. So I'm sort of wondering why that isn't a part of some of the plan, it may, may not be part of SEQA, but it may be something that we in the county just sort of add on to be able to say, you know, gee, evacuation in any developments is a critical component. So could you comment on the evacuation portion and, and what your thoughts are on potentially putting it into subsequent?
Sure, Commissioner McHattier. So on a project-level basis, we look for and rely on fire department review and public works review to review and Public Works review to make sure that there's adequate road widths and road capacity for the traffic that would be associated with the development. So any type of road improvements associated or needed or necessitated by the project would be a condition of approval. The topic of evacuation is definitely a larger, broader topic that we work with our Office of Emergency Services, our OES Department, as well as all the fire districts and CAL FIRE. There's been a number of evacuation studies that have been done countywide that try to identify the most likable or likely routes that would be used. I believe Public Works prioritizes vegetation management along those identified routes that would likely carry the most traffic so that the roadways are as clear as possible. So it is kind of a broader county-wide effort that involves a number of different jurisdictions and departments, and, you know, much tougher to implement without building new roads. We try to achieve it through maintaining adequate road widths and adequate veg modification along those roadways. And how that trickles down into a specific project would be ensuring defensible space around structures, as well as, like I mentioned, ensuring adequate road width. So that kind of goes hand-in-hand to make sure that there is as good a circulation and roadways to accommodate not only daily traffic, but the traffic that would be leaving or emergency vehicles coming into the site to accommodate addressing the emergency. So we try to do through a multiple of ways, but it's really ensuring that the road capacity we can accommodate the proposed intensity of the development.
So I think my thought is, I would love to see that as a item that is actually addressed in each of our approvals in the future as to that one of the topics is that somebody addresses so that the public knows and that the planning department and the Commission knows that we're looking at evacuation, and this is how we feel about the evacuation topic. That's sort of my, say, I don't know what my fellow Commissioners think, but I just think that that's the number-one issue in this community, is how to get out and how to get out safely. And so for us to address it in subsequent processes would be really, I think, a benefit for everyone.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Comment noted. We can certainly make a priority to include some discussion in our staff report and in our analysis for future projects.
That would be really great. Is that -- do you feel that that's needed at this point? That would be great. Thank you very much.
Want to say something?
Well, not right now.
Do you have a question?
To answer my question, I'll tell you what.
If you have a statement about evacuation.
No. So I'll tell you what. If you don't mind taking a seat there, I'll let you do this in a few minutes, okay? So let me go through my questions and -- because I believe in letting people chat, but we're going to have it in an orderly fashion. Thank you. So my question over here is to the developer. As Mr. Peay has it on his website currently, that he's offering the property for sale for $3 million. I'm just sort of wondering, how is that possible when it hasn't even gone through the process at this point?
Thank you for expressing your concern, Mr. Chair. I was not aware of that. That is new information for me. I think that it's probably something that's listed premature and with -- I wish I had a clearer answer for you on that.
Yeah, I just, I know of Mr. Peay. I know of his, you know, athletic accomplishments, et cetera. So, and I also know he's been in real estate for a long time, so I went to his site, and the first item on his site happens to be this $3 million property in Nevada County. And so that threw up red flags for me, like, what is going on here? Okay, thank you. Sir, even though it's beyond public comment time, I'd like you to come on up for us. And your name is?
Mark Peay.
Okay, hello, Mr. Peay.
I'm one of the owners of the property.
Got it.
We've met.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. A good way of evacuation is out Greenhorn, and the county should develop that. You go out Red Dog Road Cross, you go into, you bet, the ravine down in there, and it'd be great. You could go out Greenhorn and do the same thing.
Yes.
If you want to develop a plan, that would be the ideal plan to do, and I think the Fire Department would back that up.
Great.
So in answer to your question, in my mind, that's what you ought to pursue with some of your Commissioners.
Well, we don't have much power of the purse string, actually.
You had a bridge across there, but it got blasted away.
It did. It did. And because, to be perfectly frank with all of you, I own, I built a cabin out at Scott's Flat 40 years ago, and the reality is that everyone on that ridge area is afraid of fire.
And I agree with you, but you still have to have some sort of exit out of there.
Correct.
And you're going to have the county help, you've got to have the Fire Department's help. You can't have individual homeowners do that.
Right.
But that's something that I would think the Commissioners would want to address.
Great.
And as far as this, we're not changing the number of lots. The lots are all the same.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peay.
It may be a different size.
Right. No, I think everyone understands it could be a lot more lots that you're putting in.
Say that again?
Yeah, I think everyone understands that you could be putting in more lots than you are applying for.
Everything could be. We could be at war in the Ukraine, too. All right?
Yes.
There's a lot of could-be's out there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for letting me talk to Commissioner McKeer.
You're more than welcome. Glad to have you. Especially since you're part of being the applicant here, you just come on down anytime. Anyway.
I'm an old man. I'm a little hard of hearing.
Okay.
Say that again?
I'm just saying, you could have come down here with the applicant and had a chat with us.
He offered it to me, but I didn't want to embarrass him.
Ah, okay, Mr. Peay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now that we've heard from everyone who wants to speak at this point, are there any comments or any further questions that have been brought up in this?
Yeah, I guess I wonder what could be, what we could add to this application that may require that Lot 7 either be used for public good or undeveloped in the future. I think that the -- that lot being offered to CAL FIRE is what allows this application to be even considered for early removal from TPZ, and I'm just curious if that's something that is an amendment we could make to this application.
Commissioner Garst, I think it's one of the many offers, including the trail easement and then the defensible space along, I believe it's Lot 3. The Commission does have purview to change or modify the conditions of approval. I think the intent is, regardless of how the Fire District uses it, whether they use it as a landing pad, whether they make it a fire station, or whether they ultimately sell it, those funds will go towards their mission of providing public safety. And so it's not, it's up to them to decide how financially it works for them to use this site, but it is a public benefit regardless. But you do have that purview.
Does the Chief want to respond? It seems like you do.
I just want a clarification. It's going to go to Nevada County Consolidated Fire and not CAL FIRE, so I just wanted to correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
We all share everything, so.
Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner Foley? You okay?
I don't think so at this time.
Okay. I will say that having owned something out there for 40 years, I can tell you the days when I, most of those roads back in there were dirt. And I remember driving along Banner Quaker as a dirt road. I remember the, I'm trying to think what road that actually is now, that, well, Banner Quaker, that it turns there, and you go out into the forest, and you just used to say, oh, my God. So I will say that some of, for evacuation purposes, things have improved by the fact that in the last 20 years, many of those roads have been blacktopped, and so there's better. But I will say to Mr. Peay's point, there's no doubt, there's only essentially one funnel, and it all goes into Nevada City, and that's a problem. And there's nothing going out east, and that is the solution. And I think that everybody knows that and everyone realizes that. I will also note that I was in a recent conversation with the Director of OES, Office of Emergency Service, Alex Kibl-Toll, her name is, and she denoted that evacuation routes for Cascade Shores, for Deer Creek Park, for Banner Mountain are their highest priority, and that they're going to do a lot of, they have a grant to be able to do a lot of remediation on the road area and on the vegetation near the road. So I was really pleased to be able to hear that, that the county sees those areas, Cascade Shores, Deer Creek Park, Banner Mountain, as their number-one problem area, and so they've got it on the radar, and they have some solutions going forward. So with that, I'll entertain a motion relative to this project.
Can we put up the recommendations on the screen for, okay. I make a motion to recommend that the Board of Supervisors, after reviewing and considering the proposed mitigated negative declaration, EIS 24-008, for the immediate rezone and tentative final map, adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan pursuant to Sections 15074, 15073.5, and 15097 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and make findings A through D.
So do we have a second on that?
I will second.
Okay. Let's call roll on item number one there.
Thank you. How do you vote, Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
And Vice Chair McKeer?
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the immediate rezone from Timber Production Zone to Ag 30 and RA 10, RZN 23-0002, subject to the conditions included in Attachment 1, and make findings A through E pursuant to Section 1202-030C5B of the Nevada County Code.
I second.
Please call the roll.
Thank you. How do you vote, Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
And Vice Chair McKeer?
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors the approval of the tentative final map, TFM 23-0001, to allow for the creation of 11 lots, subject to the attached mitigation measures and conditions of approval, and make findings A through I pursuant to Section 13.02.040 of the Nevada County Code.
I will second.
Roll call.
Thank you. How do you vote, Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
And Vice Chair McKeer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes that public hearing. Thank you both. Thank you very much, David. Nice presentation. Thank you to the public and to the applicant. We're moving on to the second item for today, which is a proposed development permit to construct and operate an ARCO AM/PM six-dual fuel pump, 12 fueling stations, gas station, and 3,323 square-foot convenience store. The fuel pumps will be located under a 2,592 square-foot canopy. Operating hours are proposed as 24 hours per day, seven days a week. The project will include 19 parking stalls with four associated electrical vehicle charging stations. Additional site improvements will consist of the demolition of the existing office building, site grading, installation of underground stormwater management facilities, a maximum eight-foot retaining wall near the rear of the building, the western northern sides of the parcel, a four-foot retaining wall along Comby Road, and two 22,000-gallon underground fuel tanks, one unleaded and one for diesel. New signage, lighting, landscape irrigation, fencing, a trash enclosure, pedestrian walkways, and two access points onto Comby Road are also proposed. And so now, Tyler, it's over to you.
Thank you, Chair McKeer, Tyler Verrington, Principal Planner, excuse me, and interim Director of Housing. The item for your consideration, as Chair McKeer so eloquently read to the record, is a proposed gas station located at 10018 Comby Road in South Nevada County. And the picture before you is the existing condition. This project is on approximately 0.81-acre parcel in South Nevada County at the corner of Comby Road and State Route 49 on the northeast side of the road. It's in an area zoned as community commercial or C2. It also has a general plan designation of community commercial. Also, the zoning district includes the Scenic Corridor Combining District, or SC, and a site performance combining district. The site performance combining district requires adherence to the Greater Higgins Area Plan. The primary surrounding uses in the area are commercial in nature, with the exception of the parcel in blue north of the project site, which is the Higgins Fire Protection District Fire Station. It is developed with an approximately 1,290-square-foot office building, and there are proposed as two access points onto Comby Road, public water and sewer. I will note that this application was originally considered as a part of pre-application back in 2022, where the applicant received comments from various departments, including planning, Public Works, Environmental Health, Caltrans, before submitting their formal application. So just for a brief overview of the development permit process, a convenience store and a service station are allowed use within the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District with the approval of development permit. The purpose of a development permit is to allow for consideration of uses that are generally consistent with the purpose of the zoning district, but require careful review to ensure compliance with all site development standards of the County Code. So as a part of this presentation, I'll try and define how this project meets those standards. I will note that this project was referred to the Planning Commission by the County Zoning Administrator, as allowed for by Section 1205.050E4 of the Nevada County Code, specifically due to public comments received, as well as comments during, received during the review process at two South County Municipal Advisory Council meetings. Oh, and then also because it's within that Greater Higgins Area Plan and is one of the first developments since the adoption of that plan. So as Chair McKeer outlined, the project site, you have before you both the existing site plan as well as the proposed site plan. The project, if approved, will include demolition of the existing building and 12 space parking lots, as well as site landscaping. There'll be site grading that will occur. The project proposes the construction operation of approximately 3,323 square-foot ARCO AM/PM convenience store with six dual fueling stations, so 12 total, two underground storage tanks. The operating hours are proposed as 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There are 19 proposed parking spaces, including one ADA space or accessible space with four electrical vehicle charging stations. I mentioned the retaining walls, and I'll just kind of give you an idea. Retaining walls are proposed along this side of the proposed project to allow for grades to meet ADA requirements. There's also some fencing being proposed at the back of the site to provide some separation between the proposed project and the fire station. There are two right-in, right-out, turn access points proposed in the project, and then, again, lighting, signage, and landscaping, as I previously mentioned. There's two underground stormwater detention basins that help meter the stormwater created by new impervious surfaces at post, or, excuse me, at pre-project levels, consistent with public policy or county policy. The project will connect to the public sewer to the east. And then I also wanted to mention, consistent with the policies of the Greater Higgins Area Higgins area plan, the project will construct along the project frontage the multipurpose path envisioned as a part of that plan, and then provide an area for a community gateway sign, which is also recommended by that plan. So this is just a blow up of the proposed site plan to give the commission a better view of what is being proposed. As you can see, the convenience store is on the western side of the project with facing east. The proposed fuel stations and canopies in the middle of the site. The project did include a truck turning tenlet to demonstrate that the fueling trucks and other vehicles that access the site, including a fire truck, will be able to access and maneuver around the particular site itself. Regarding architecture, the applicant originally provided slightly different architecture and through the review of the South County Municipal Advisory Council, did some amendments, including changing the roof color. The details are designed to be compatible with the neighboring development to the south, the CVS Shopping Center and like. There is stucco being proposed in two different tones along the corners and as well as the middle of the building. There is a stone veneer being proposed at the entry point, as well as a wainscoting. Aluminum windows are proposed. The metal roofs, mansard roofs, will be standing seam metal, and there's also some metal canopies over the fronts of the building to break up the massing. The applicant is proposing to provide faux windows and then some lattice structures on the, I believe it's the south and west elevations to help break up that massing and allow for vines and things to grow. Here's some architectural rendings of the proposed project that kind of demonstrate what the project will look like from an aerial photo, and then some night views. I will note that the night view, particularly where the cursor is, reflects up-facing light, but the actual project doesn't include that, and it's prohibited to have that type of wall wash lighting. The downward-facing security lights are allowed by the code. Regarding signage, the applicant does include, the application does include a fairly significant amount of signage proposed as a part of the project. And there's a few things that I wanted to note in specific to the project. So the county's code allows for one monument sign with a project such as this. That monument sign is not allowed to exceed 25 square feet or be over five foot in height. And I'll note that this is generally a typical ARCO AM/PM signing plan, and it's not, the architecture is not specific to this particular project, although the form of the building and the shape is generally the same. As you'll notice, there aren't the mansard roofs on the corner parapets. So there is a condition of approval that restricts that monument sign to being within those site parameters. I will note that the pricing portion of the sign for the gas is not counted as a part of that 25 square feet. So essentially, the little decal you can see here would be allowed to be 25 square feet total. What's proposed or shown on is just slightly larger than that, and so that's a condition of approval. I'd also note that the applicant originally is proposing a goalpost sign, as they called it, or a large pricing sign on the western edge of the proposed project. And staff, after review of the scenic corridor analysis, which both Comby Road and this portion of State Highway 49 are considered a scenic combining district by the county, and also because the existing Chevron station to the south was not allowed to have such a tall sign, we have a condition of approval which prohibits that sign because we feel it's not in the character of the Greater Higgins area, and it would be inconsistent with that scenic corridor designation. With that, staff, as outlined in your staff report, would be open to moving the proposed monument sign, which is near where the cursor is, to the western side of the parcel, so long as that sign doesn't block sites that's consistent with the Public Works policy that's outlined in the plan. The project also includes a fairly standard wall sign at the front of the building over the entry, and then canopy signage and the fuel pumps have the decal. I would note that as per the scenic corridor analysis, as provided as part of this project, that none of these signs will be proposed to be internally illuminated, and therefore they will require external illumination. Typically in Nevada County, we allow for like downward-facing gooseneck lighting to go over the sign and face down, and that's very much consistent with the existing development to the south. I finally want to also reference the proposed gateway identification sign. This is approximately in this location here. That will be vetted and determined to be what the style will be by the community at a later date. This is one of the policies and recommendations of the Greater Higgins area plan, and so in this location, it was actually determined to be the most suitable because of its visibility to the driver on State Highway 49. And so a condition of approval, A10, requires that they dedicate either an easement or a deed restriction that would prohibit that area from being developed for a future sign to be placed there. I might also note the county's code does require and recommend that monument signs include a native base that's in a landscaped area, and so those conditions of approval require that for the monument sign as well. Regarding landscaping, the applicant did provide a preliminary landscaping plan, which is included in your proposed, in your staff report. It does demonstrate that shade covering will be provided 40% of the overall parking area within 15 years, which is consistent with county policy. It provides for adequate screening of roads and neighboring properties. There is proposed extensive landscaping through the site, and the colors and plants below are just kind of a, to give you an idea of what the planting palette will be. I'll note that landscaping is required to meet the county, or it does, and is required to meet the county's minimum landscaping requirements, as well as the state Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance standards, and they demonstrate that they can meet those standards. And then there's standard condition of approval, specifically A10, planning condition that will require them to provide a letter of surety before final occupancy that all planting has been in place, and then they'll have to maintain that throughout the duration of the operation of the site. I didn't go over lighting specifically, but I'll speak to that. Lighting, these two fixtures are the, what is being proposed. The one on the left is the parking lot landscape or lighting, and then the one on the right is gooseneck lighting. That'll be on the building for security purposes. These are consistent with the county's requirements, that they're downward-facing and fully shielded. Your staff report does note that the original photometric plan showed for a little bit of light spill coming off of the site, and therefore a condition of approval, A10 and A12, actually A12, requires that they submit a final photometric plan demonstrating that they can comply with the county's standards, which is to not allow light spill. And there's some suggestions in that condition that specifically require, could require the removal of some lights, lowering them, or using less intense lighting fixtures. The store, the project is compliant with many of the, with all of the county's site development standards, including setbacks. I would note that the height of the building is 24, approximately 24 feet. The fueling canopy is approximately 18 feet, where 45 feet is allowed in this area of the county. The design utilizes earth tones and natural materials consistent with the Western Nevada County design guidelines, as well as the Greater Higgins area plan, which recommends that the design of commercial uses be consistent with other development in the area. And the design was specifically done to reflect the neighboring property to the nor, or to the south, which is developed with a number of different commercial uses. The solid waste enclosure, as well as the retaining walls, are designed consistent to match the proposed building and meet the backout requirements for that waste enclosure. The retaining walls will be dressed up with, I forget the exact name of the materials, but it's, I can't even look at it. But anyways, it's not just your standard split seam wall. It's dressed up with a material. I can look it up in a minute. The parking, I believe 17 spaces is actually required, but they're providing 19. I mentioned that ADA space, as well as the four EV charging stations. And then regarding signage, with the conditions of approval, that signage is compliant with the county's design guidelines and recommend, or zoning guidelines. And I previously mentioned that it will have to be externally illuminated versus internally illuminated. Specifically addressing public review, or excuse me, environmental review, the project initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration was available between February 7th, 2025, and March 10th, 2025. All of the proposed impacts identified as part of this project were mitigated to less than significant levels. We did receive some public comments during the public review period from United Auburn Indian Community stating that they had no further comments, from Caltrans stating that they were comfortable with the analysis and didn't have any other additional comments, but wanted to be apprised of future movement on this project, which is concluded in the project's condition of approvals. We did receive two public comments as a part of that review period. Those comments address things like public safety, noise, and traffic generated by this project. I will note that traffic was reviewed by both Public Works, the Nevada County Transportation Commission, as well as Caltrans, and no adverse issues were identified. It's designed to meet the county's access requirements and didn't exceed thresholds for level of service or VMT, vehicle miles traveled. I would like to point out that we did receive some additional public comments, which are included in staff's memo to the commission dated 3/27/25. Those public comments were very similar in nature, concerns over public safety, over noise, and over the impacts of this commercial development. And I would note that no new impacts were identified that weren't otherwise reviewed and considered by the proposed mitigated negative declaration and the project conditions of approval. I would also make a special note that the, one of these letters was from a law firm out of Irvine, California, and that request was to extend the public comment period because essentially they are referring that staff didn't make, or the county didn't make the subsequent supporting documentation available to the reviewer. And I would note that our typical process was followed for noticing of this. It did notify where you could obtain online copies of the initial study. It provided the planners contact information where they had the opportunity to contact the planner to request additional information, and it also noted that hard copies were available here at the county office. During the public review period for the sequa document, no attempt was made by this law firm, law firm or whoever they're representing to obtain this information. They also didn't identify any additional environmental concerns as a part of their review. And then I also want to note that while this meeting was going on, I always indicated that we received a second letter from the same law firm stating that we didn't make the biological inventory, the traffic study, the preliminary drainage analysis, the geotechnical engineering report available to them. Very similar comments. And I would note that that's been available through the public portal to anyone since the inception of the project approximately two, a year and a half ago. And so it would be available, and should they have reached out to staff, staff would make that available to them because this is all public information. The initial study did utilize the same consistent practice that the planning department does because should we attach the traffic study, the geotechnical engineering report, the drainage analysis, and all those things, you'd end up with like a 400-page initial study with every project. And so those are always available for review by the public, and therefore, staff does not recommend extending the public comment period for the initial study. And the other thing I wanted to note that that letter came in approximately 11 days after the close of that period. So with that, I would note that, you know, all, as I previously mentioned, all impacts have been mitigated. The conditions of approval ensure that this project is consistent with zoning. And I will note some of the key mitigation measures and conditions of approval that I went into was the prohibition of the 12 and five-foot tall pole sign. There is one large sign in this area, but it's for a multi-tenant project, the Holiday Market. But as I previously mentioned, the Chevron immediately south of the site was not allowed to have such a tall sign. There are significant requirements from the Air Quality Management District that will be adhered to. And we also, going back a little bit, some of those comments that we received from the public was that, you know, air quality was not considered. But we did receive a letter from Air Quality that noted that all of their concerns have been met through the review of the initial study. I'd mentioned that no internally lit signage will be included as a part of this project, with the exception of the pricing sign as required by state law. There is a requirement that they annex into a public PRD for, because, because the access is a right-in and right-out, and there's a light at Higgins Corner as you pull into the site from the right, and you have to do U-turn to get back to it. Trucks will have to be routed down Woodbridge Lane through Higgins Road and then back to the site to serve as fueling station, and that's a requirement that the applicant will put on their truck drivers. But because the trucks will be using that road, did Public Works require that they annex into that and help pay their fair share for utilization of those roads? This project will require to maintain site distance, and then they pay a traffic impact mitigation fee. There is standard protection for cultural and archaeological resources as a part of this project. None were found as a part of the review, but there's, it's always unknown once you start digging on the ground what you'll find, and so those are included. There is requirements for oversight by the Department of Environmental Health related to the convenience store, food use, and then also the fueling station. There was review and approval by the county fire marshal who coordinated with Higgins Fire Protection District. And then there's also a requirement that this project meet county noise standards, and that includes a mitigation measure for limited construction times from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Excuse me. So with that being said, this project is determined to be consistent with several goals and policies of the county general plan as outlined in your staff report, pages 18 through 20. It's consistent with the C2 or community commercial zoning district by providing, or by being a project that allows, is allowed with a development permit as long as it can meet all county's site development standards. It's also consistent with the SC combining district. They provided a scenic corridor analysis, which is included in your packet, which is a requirement of that zoning district and demonstrate how it won't result in significant visual impacts. The screening, landscaping will help it blend into the environment. The lack of internally lit cabinet lighting will assist with meeting the character of the area. And then it's also consistent with the SP combining district, which, again, I mentioned, requires adherence to the Greater Higgins area plan, and primarily in two areas, three actually. One is providing a consistent design with other developed areas in this vicinity. Two, by providing that multipurpose path across that goes along the project frontage, which will later be connected to a pathway that goes to the Cascade Crossing subdivision. And then finally, by providing that gateway sign, which is a recommended policy of that and goal of that area plan. So with that, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission, after reviewing, considering the proposed project, taking public testimony, that you approve the environmental document, making findings A through D, and then you also approve the development permit, making findings A through L, and those actions are in your staff report. And that concludes my staff report. I happen to take questions.
Great. Thank you, Tyler. So are there any clarifications that you need from Tyler at this point before we open up to the public and then the applicant? You okay? Okay. So we're going to open it up to the public, and then we'll open it up to the applicant to respond to them. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this project? You have up to three minutes to chat with us.
Mr. Chair, I believe the applicant has a presentation which might help inform the commission and the public.
Okay, okay. I always like it that they then get to respond to the public, but if you'd like to do your presentation now, we'll do it now.
Yeah, I could do it either way.
That's fine. Go ahead.
It might answer some of the questions, and then I could also respond. So, yeah, I appreciate it. I'll just direct you to change the slides. My name's Rob Wood. I'm the Principal Planner at Millennium Planning and Engineering. I'm representing the applicant, who's also here today. And I have just a brief presentation. I'll keep it very brief and not, hopefully no redundancy with what staff went over.
Is that correct?
Yep. That's it. Go ahead. So just basic timeline, we started with a pre-application. For projects such as this, it's very common that we start with a pre-application, get comments from staff, and then, and then jump into the meat of the project, which for a development permit has to go through a full sequa process. And then ultimately, we ended up at two public hearings. South County MAC was the first one about the middle of, or the end of South County MAC was the first one about the middle of, or the end of 2023. And then identified some minor design suggestions, as staff pointed out, roof color, some stuff with landscaping, signage, that sort of thing. So when we made those changes, we scheduled a second South County MAC meeting. There was also a public hearing in July of 2024. And that's basically what I want to go over in my presentation, is just three comments that had come up in those South County MAC meetings. And then it's very similar to the comments that we've gotten the last couple of days from the public. So want to go over the traffic issues, the truck delivery route, and also a question that's come up from some of why another gas station. So starting with traffic, in the bottom right-hand corner, that's looking west on Combi. To the right is the subject property, and to the left, far out to the left, you can see the Chevron station. The important thing here is there's a median that goes all the way along in this stretch of Combi, so that you cannot go left into the project or left out of the project on either side of the street. So then switching over to the exhibit on the left, since you can't turn left into Chevron, currently what people do, coming from the east, from Lake of the Pines, they would follow the red line. They would take a left at Higgins, pull into the CVS parking lot, and go through the parking lot, and Chevron's at the end there. And then exiting, after getting gas at Chevron, they would exit the same way to the traffic light at Higgins, or they can take a shorter route and get back onto Combi, which is a right-in, right-out, about halfway between there. And then they would do, if they're going to 49, they would do a U-turn at the light. This project, as proposed, just is a right-in, right-out, straight off of Combi Road, so very, very convenient. We did a very thorough traffic evaluation. It was done by W Trans. They're a professional traffic consultant. One thing they noted was that gas stations are inherently convenience-based use. Why that's important is people tend to get gas on their way to work, on their way to run errands. Typically, people don't just leave their home, get gas, and go home. So that's important in this project because it makes it so that predominantly the trips are passed by trips. So what that means is if there's a total trip count estimated for a project such as this of, say, 2,000, 70% of those trips are already on the street. They're already on Combi Road in the street system. So there's a huge reduction. These aren't new trips and new traffic counts for a project like this. Most are pass-by trips. Another question that came up was on truck delivery and a concern about trucks making a U-turn at the traffic light at Higgins. They wouldn't go that route. They would, first of all, they get instructions and directions to the delivery address, and that, the direction they're going to go is coming from Auburn or Sacramento. They're going to take a right on Woodridge. You can see the yellow line there, left on Higgins, and then a left on Combi. And as staff pointed out, we have a condition that we have to annex into the PRD so that we pay our fair share on that road system to maintain it. So ultimately, no U-turns are necessary. So the big question on some people's mind, sorry, why a gas station? There's lots of reasons why a gas station, especially at this location. Number one, convenience. It's a very easy-in, easy-out, coming from the east. As you can see by the aerial photo, there's a lot of development to the east. That's Lake of the Pines there that you see, which leads into the next thing of relieving congestion, Chevron being the primary service station there. This would reduce wait times and congestion at the pump, especially during AM and PM peak hours. It definitely captures the demand, both existing and future. There's a big demand now with existing. You can see how much development is there at Lake of the Pines. And I'll just note that the surrounding area to the north, and to the south, and to the east, has a significant amount of R3 and R2 zoning that are undeveloped parcels. So R3 is a high-density residential zone. R2 is a medium-density residential zone. So as those parcels build out over the years, there'll even be a much larger increased demand than there is currently. And again, I already went over the pass-by trips. It reduces the amount of new traffic for a project like this. Competition and choice is always good. I think ultimately, that's always good for the consumer. It brings prices down. And I'll note that Arco generally has the cheapest prices out of any gas stations. Getting gas here rather than in Auburn keeps money in the county. There's also going to be employment needed, so it adds to the employment. And then lastly, this type of use, gas station is very similar. It's kind of a unique land use that creates synergy. Gas stations, fast food restaurants, hotels, they're unique in that one may do okay, two, three, or four of this type of use creates a synergy, and it's very common with these types of uses. So there's a lot of reasons why to put a gas station at this location. So just to summarize, as staff pointed out, we're consistent, this project is consistent with the general plan. It's consistent with the zoning ordinance. It's consistent with the Higgins Area Plan. It complies with SEQA. A full SEQA review was done, and all impacts were found to be able to be mitigated to less than significant levels, which is the threshold. All the required findings, both for the environmental review, the MND, and the development permit, were made. And as far as public benefit, a multi-use trail would be provided by this project along the entire frontage of the project, a 12-foot-wide concrete multipurpose trail that is slated to connect from Highway 49 all the way out to Lake of the Pines. Just also provides a convenient option for residents. It's a very great location for people coming from the east, coming from Lake of the Pines and future build-out in those higher residential areas. It's a very convenient way to, on your way to work, right-in, right-out, and they're back on the highway, either going towards Grass Valley or towards Auburn. And so as a convenient-based use and an infill site, it's an ideal location for a fueling station. I would just say, as a land planner that's done this for a long time, I can't think of a better use at this location. An infill site next to a highway and the way it works out with the convenience-based use that are already on the road, it's absolutely an ideal location for this type of use. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good. We'll get to that right after we hear from the public.
Sounds good.
Okay? Great. Thank you. So if anyone from the public would like to chat with us for up to three minutes, please come on down. You're the next contestant.
Hi. My name's John. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah. My name's John Newton. I'm a Placer County resident, but also a commercial real estate broker and somebody active in this part of the world. I think these types of projects are vital for our community, and I'm going to speak in favor of it, and I hope you find that as well. It's a really important project. I'm super excited there's a EV charging station, because I drive an electric car. I don't have a gas car, but so I'm excited that's, you know, we need more of those in our community. So I'm excited that's part of what this project would provide. So I hope that you vote in favor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Are you Higgins-Diggins people up there?
Yes.
I'd love to have someone from Higgins-Diggins come chat with me for a minute, if that's possible. Thank you. Hi.
Hey, Joe.
And you are?
Joel Tam, Chief with Higgins Fire.
Great. So Joel, I didn't see any comments from your department. This is directly next to your property there. And so I was sort of concerned about people doing U-turns or anything, or, you know, doing any kind of craziness. And I'm just really interested in sort of your thoughts relative to any of this.
So my thoughts on it is, I don't think we're going to see any more U-turns than we currently see now. The traffic coming from Bear River, Magnolia, Cottage Hill, that's just normal traffic. I don't see people coming in off 49, coming in and making a U-turn at the driveway to get to AM PM where the Chevron's on the other side. As far as an impact to us, none of the gas stations have ever created like an operational impact. It's usually some medical aids, very minor, minor stuff. My only concern during this whole thing, and we addressed it, was some kind of security fencing on top of the retaining wall, just to keep people from hopping over into our apparatus bay or into our training room barracks. And we've talked about that, and that was addressed. So I really don't have too much concern about it.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, Tyler?
I just want to note that the Higgins Fire District's comments are in condition D, which was worked out with the county fire marshal.
Okay. Super. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll turn it over to commissioners to chat. I'm sorry we don't have a commissioner who represents the South County, because that's a very important voice, but that's not to be here today. So anyone like to chat? Joe?
Thanks, Terry. I have a couple of questions. One question I had is that there's a sidewalk being proposed along Combi that appears to be outside of the property line. What additional permits or approvals are required for that?
So that'll be part of the multipurpose path, and it'll require an encroachment permit from Public Works. And Public Works did review that as a part of this project.
And then, can you just explain how development permits are typically reviewed? They don't typically come in front of planning commission. Is that correct?
So generally, sorry, Commissioner Garst, generally, development permits over 10,000 square feet in use area do come to the planning commission. This one being 3,323 square feet plus the canopy does meet that threshold. But yes, you do review development permits.
Okay. And then in regards to the EV charging stations, I noticed in the application it said that they would be future. And I also noticed that on the utility plan, there was no electrical shown to that location. Can you address when those would go in and what type of EV chargers they would be? If they would be just one, the 110, or if they would be the superchargers? Just what's being proposed there?
Sure. They will be put in during the construction. It used to be that we would just run raceways, and the charging could be put in later, but it is a green code requirement now to put in charging upfront. So there'll be four charging stations put in during construction before we get CFO. They will be Level 2 charging, not superchargers, but Level 2.
Great. Thank you. I wanted to address the changes to the signage, and I'm curious why the non-conforming signage was not addressed in the application and was instead addressed through the conditions of approval. This seems not the typical way of dealing with that. I think it would have been nice, especially given the requirements for the signage to be on natural material, the base requirements, not being able to see what's being proposed to meet that requirement is unfortunate. So I'm just curious why that was decided.
Commissioner Garst, so technically, our code does allow for a 25-foot-tall sign along the highway. And so during the review process, that wasn't caught in terms of how it relates to the scenic corridor and the Greater Higgins Area Plan. And when I took the project over, I identified that as a potential concern as we were developing the SEQA document, and noticed some of the other signage didn't meet the criteria in terms of the right sizing and having a design that included the architectural base and things like that. So because the project was deemed complete in January of 2024, I had to kind of move with what we had originally required of the applicant and then do what I could through the conditions of approval to meet the county's standards.
Okay. Thank you. That makes sense. So how will those changes be submitted? And those will just be reviewed internally with the planning department?
Correct. So as a part of the building permit review for the project, we'll be looking at the signed plan when the building, the proposed project is reviewed. And then prior to issuing final occupancy, staff will do a site visit to ensure that it was constructed as designed and that the landscaping and the lighting meets their criteria and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. Are signs, signs are allowed to be within, outside of the building setbacks or inside of the building setbacks, even when they're on permanent foundations?
Typically, yes. Signs are allowed as long as they don't obstruct site distance.
And the design requirements for the building, are those specific to the Higgins General Plan or are those county requirements?
So both. The Western Nevada County Design Guidelines are the kind of the guiding document, but those are further refined by the Greater Higgins Area Plan, consistent with most of our area plans. The primary policy in the area plan was to be compatible with existing design in the area. And so that's why they utilize colors, roof colors, that were consistent with the CVS across the street.
Okay. Thank you. Last year, we reviewed an extension for the use permit for the Holiday Market gas station. I was not a commissioner at the time when that initial application came in front of the commission. I'm curious if you can show us on a map where that would be located, just mostly out of curiosity, to how many gas stations and how close they'll be to each other.
The applicant's slide deck probably shows it better, but it's essentially where the cursor is.
Okay. And?
And the project site is here.
I see. Okay. So it'll be off Woodridge Drive?
Correct.
Okay.
Next to the Holiday Market itself.
Okay. But more internal than?
Essentially attached to the building.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Interesting. And then the U-turns on Combi, that's a permitted?
Correct. It's a legal term.
Maneuver. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Foley?
I just had a couple of concerns. Commissioner Garst kind of already addressed one with the approved Holiday gas station that's going in there as well. Thank you for clarifying where that's going to be so we just have an idea of the location of that and how that's going to play out with these, with the Chevron and with this proposed project as well. My only other real concern was, you know, was addressed by Rob when he spoke about the traffic concerns. I live down in this area. You know, it's a busy intersection, and it makes sense that this is, this business is to mainly capture that eastbound traffic leaving Lake of the Pines rather than trying to capture traffic coming north and south on Highway 49. Because I do, you know, I do agree that that's not going to make much sense for someone to enter into the gas station off Highway 49 and having to do a U-turn there in front of the fire station. And my only other real concern, and Higgins addressed it, was really for the impacts on the fire station, that this is going to be a neighboring project. It's going to be open 24 hours a day. Obviously, there's impacts that come along with that. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we've taken every mitigation effort that we possibly can to make sure that there's not an impact on the Higgins Fire Department. You know, not only do the firefighters work there, but they live there as well. You know, they're sleeping there. And so just to make sure that that's not a disturbance, but I'm happy to hear that that's kind of been worked out already between Higgins Fire and the applicant. And if they're happy with it, then that's really all that's required.
Great. Thank you. And I just will note that Higgins Fire District was a part of like the Development Review Committee meetings that we held at the onset of the project, and that's where the fence kind of came involved in the project.
So that's really all I have.
Great. Thank you. So I'm interested in the, in that Higgins Corner group, the, whatever you called it, I forget the name they have down there, the South County Group that you brought together, the MAC down there. And how, when you say people came to the meetings and all, how are they noticed? How are those groups noticed?
Commissioner McAtier, members of the commission, they're noticed similar to how this particular body is noticed. I don't know that they have a surrounding property owner notice requirement, such as the planning commission does, but they would be legally noticed in the newspaper and posted at the county sites.
And go ahead. And, go ahead, Brian.
Maybe chime in a little bit. They, they're run through our board office. The MAC is appointed by the district supervisor, and so they have a list of people that they reach out to and notify. They do postings around the neighborhood and do mailings, and I don't know that there's a standard, you know, 500 square feet, or 500-foot radius. They notice Lake of the Pines, the neighborhood around there, Cascade Shores, those sorts of things, so.
Right.
But it is a county kind of function. It's an arm of, of the county supervisor.
Oh, it is. Okay. Thank you. So, with that, you know, we had this project down in Penn Valley about doing an outdoor amphitheater or whatever else, and that, that MAC chimed in on the project and said they had approved it. Was there, was there a vote in this MAC or did they, how, how was their response to this?
Um, great. So, the South County MAC is, essentially is, the way that they operate is based on the direction from their supervisor. And in Penn Valley, the MAC provides typically a written recommendation for projects. In South County, through this review process, the commissioner, or the supervisor at the time, Supervisor Schofield, didn't have the commission make an actual recommendation. They just took public comment and gave feedback to the applicant regarding design and the things that Rob outlined.
And you were at these couple of meetings, Tyler?
Correct.
And how many were in attendance, just so I get an idea of?
Well, the, the Wolfcraft Collective was at one of them, so there were quite a few.
Yeah.
But I would say 10 or 15.
Okay.
Plus or minus.
Good.
They were well attended, but there were two projects.
So, Auburn Gas, this isn't, are they in the gas business for a number of gas stations? Is that, this is one of them, number? Do they own the one, the other Arco down on Dry Creek?
I don't know if they own that one, but they do own several gas stations throughout California.
Okay. It's just not so, I mean, it's not the Dwell family at all, is it? Tom Dwell, who's the principal?
Uh, not the.
No.
No.
Okay. Because I know he lives in Lake of the Pines, and that's why, that's why I sort of asked it. So, there is no signage on the Highway 49 side, side of this building. Is that correct?
That is correct. Now, like I mentioned, because we're prohibiting the large pole or goalpost sign, we are allowing them to move that monument sign closer to the highway should they desire.
And, and this, this Higgins Community District sign, that's not being paid for by the applicant here. It's, it's going to have to be some, some other entity.
Correct. I think the way that the condition is, is written and the desire of the area plan is that the community would later come forward and help design that sign, so it meets what the intention of the community is. But the condition itself reserves that area so that it could be placed there. And I believe there's two locations identified in the Greater Higgins area plan for this sign. One was on the south side of the road and one is on the north side, with the north side being the more desirable.
Is the Holiday Market, are the Holiday Market people still working with you and they're, knowing that there's potentially going to be four gas stations?
I haven't heard from them since they got their approval for the extension of time, but I assume they're moving forward at some point.
Okay. And how about the gas station, the other one? I can't remember the name of it.
That's Wolf. Wolf Gas.
Yeah. Is there any plans for improvement to that, that center? Is that sort of?
Not that I'm aware of. We have had correspondence with someone who has an approved site plan, if you will, from the 90s, that they're working on bringing their nursery, it's a nursery and a vet clinic that was approved, but they never quite met their conditions of approval, but that's a little bit farther west of the gas station.
Okay.
And I just want to note that, you know, the planning department, we don't solicit development, so like we're not out choosing whether a gas station comes here.
To get more gas stations, yes.
The applicant, the property owner is the one who comes in, and then it's our job to review that for consistency with our codes.
Talk to me about EV charging stations, especially, are these, are there other public charging stations down in the Lake of the Pines area that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
And Holiday Market doesn't have any over there?
I don't think so. They may have, they, they probably came under earlier codes and they might be set up to connect to them, but I don't believe they have them.
I think that takes care of my questions. Thank you. So, anything else the applicant would like to chime in to us about?
I have nothing to add.
So, with that, I'll turn to commissioners as to what next steps.
Yeah. Sorry about that. So, next I'll put the full action on there, but it's on page 21 of your staff report.
I got it right here. So, I'd like to make a motion that after reviewing and considering the proposed project, approve the development permit, DVP 23-0002, provided an attachment to pursuant to sections 15074 and 15097 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and make findings A through C.
I second.
Roll call.
Thank you. How do you vote? Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
And Vice Chair McAtier?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would also like to make a motion that after reviewing and considering the proposed project, approve the development permit, DVP 23-0005, subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, an attachment one, and pursuant to Nevada County zoning regulations, make the following findings, A through L.
I second.
Roll call.
Thank you. How do you vote? Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
Vice Chair McAtier?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll note there's a 10-day appeal period for that. Action.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best, best to you and your adventure here. Tyler, thank you very much. We'll turn over to Mr. Foss for any thoughts, upcoming meetings, et cetera.
Sure. Thank you, Chair McAtier. At this point, we are likely to have a hearing on April 24th would be our next meeting. Yep, that's the right date. And a potential with a, a map and a rezone project as well as a development agreement. So, potential two, two agenda items on that day. Beyond that, I don't know that we have anything scheduled, but we don't have anything earlier, so the next planned one will be on April 24th. And trying to think of any other updates at the board. Any, any questions on any projects or any other issues?
No, I, I do think when we get our newest commissioner that there's, that some type of workshop to be able to discuss relevant topics, not just Brown Act issues, but more in terms of going through some of the planning process, maybe meeting some of the planning department or so, something that, something that we create this rapport between the department and the commission would be of real value.
We did have a little introduction. I have Brian, the end of the department staff, so I got, I got a little rundown.
Okay.
I appreciate the planning staff reaching out to us, both Tyler and David, and I appreciate that.
Very valuable. Thank you. But I do think, I do, I, I would love to have a chance to just have a conversation, maybe with Tyler and you, Brian, about things like evacuation routes, like things like EV charging stations, those kinds of things which are bigger, bigger and futuristic-looking, which I think would be quite valuable.
Sure. And, and we can do that one-on-one, and then if we're looking at more of a workshop-type of situation, we'll have to notice it and we'll have to be open to the public because of the Brown Act issues.
Right. I, I'm just suggesting that, that commissioners submit things that they might be interested in having a conversation about, and I would bet that whatever Joe puts in, I'd be interested in hearing. So, if we had the chance of just putting ideas, those would be two of mine, which are evacuation and EV charging, that we have that, just the chance to be able to have that at the end of some meeting to be able to answer some of those questions would be valuable.
Okay. Understood.
I don't know how you, how the rest of my commissioners feel, but I think that better knowledge base helps, helps being a more informed commissioner. Anything else from anyone?
I was just curious if any of the upcoming applications are getting close, any of the ones that are on this list, to a complete status?
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anyone in particular?
No, I was just curious if, if they were getting, anything's coming up in the pipeline?
They're all in various stages. Some are moving, some aren't, and like I said, nothing is within the next month or two, so. But I can follow up and give you more if you'd like.
I will note that the, the Holiday Market in Penn Valley did come back in recently and was redistributed for public, or for agency comments, so that's one of the larger ones on that list, I believe. That's getting some momentum.
Where is that? Are they, are they due land? Is, are they building a whole new complex?
They're, they're proposing a new complex, or a, just a new standalone, I think it's approximately 30,000 square foot Holiday Market, and it's adjacent to the existing commercial development down there, right off Pleasant Valley Road, before you get to the mini storage on the right-hand side.
Before you get to the mini storage. So, not far from the intersection way up there?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Really moving it. Uh-huh. Okay.
Don't they have one right over there?
Well, they do, but it's pretty small.
That's true. Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Right.
Anything else from you, John? Anything?
No.
Okay. Great to have you here.
Sound pretty good.
Good. That's good.